Welcome, everyone, to the, whatever day this is, April 9th, 2018. Our first council meeting after a long spring break. I hope everyone is refreshed. I think we've got a full night ahead of us, so I thank you all. We have a, our first order of business actually is committee items and items of interest. And I just want to preface my invitation to all of you with a little bit of a time check, because I believe the first agenda item might take a little while. And I am hoping that we will get to both agenda items tonight, because the second one, the dog licensing, is time limited if we're going to roll out some new decision on the dog ban by the summer time. So, hoping we can do the construction excise tax within an hour, if not 45 minutes. And so, with that, I'm hoping committee reports, items of interest can be brief, but I do invite you to share. Emily, go for it.
Thank you. The neighborhood matching grants are on our consensus, our consent calendar tonight. It's really exciting. All nine projects got approved. I'm especially excited about the Jefferson Dog Park. I've got six hours to put in there. I think we need more neighborhood dog parks. It's ridiculous to have to drive your car to let your dog run. And I think we need one in every 20-minute neighborhood, maybe even more of them. And as we increase density within fill, we're going to lose backyards, and I think we need to be especially mindful of preserving green space where we can come together and socialize and talk. Healthier dogs, healthier people from walking to the dog park. I think this is something that we should move up the list. I don't think a lot of people think about it, but there's a great big apartment building next to me, and a few years they started letting people have dogs. And we've just got them everywhere, but we don't have anywhere to run around except a park where it's not off-leash. So, that's a concern of mine. I'm also a little concerned about how things were set up for the planning commission meeting about the secondary dwelling units. Council had directed that we would put it into two phases. Phase one being all zones can have SDUs where there's a house. And phase two would be the parameters modifying that. And we agreed we'd keep what we had. And then there was at the, at the public hearing, some requests to do a lot of changes for phase two now with no public input. An ordinance was written up. I went to the meeting and we didn't get to the ordinance, times always of an issue. But I was concerned that council's direction wasn't really, it worked out fine, but I had a frenzy of outrage on the email, and it brought that to my concern that we make decisions, let's pay attention to them. Thanks very much.
All right. Claire?
Thank you. Well, my item of interest was not about dog parks, but I think that's definitely a worthy goal. And I just, I had noted that the Santa Clara Community Neighborhood Association is looking, working with Parks and Rec to develop a dog park in an undeveloped park near the Fred Meyer off of Division Ave. So, I'm hoping they're making good progress, progress with that. I think it'll be a really fine asset. And I agree with Emily that it would be great if we could work towards creating even small ones in most of our neighborhoods. What I was going to speak to is I've had an opportunity, thanks to Councilor Pryor letting me know, and I'm going to be attending a conference in Birmingham, Alabama, at the beginning of May, to learn more about their, it's a community court conference, and Judge Allen will be attending, and I, I'm assuming other city staff. I don't know the whole roster of who is going, but I'm very pleased to be able to have this opportunity to learn more about community court systems, how they operate, and how we can enhance ours here in Eugene.
That's great. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the privilege to attend the Santa Clara Community Organization meeting here this last Thursday, and I have attended that meeting in that place for years, and I don't think I've ever seen that room packed with so many people before, ever. It was, there were probably something between 200 and 300 people inside of this one little meeting room in the Messiah Lutheran Church out there on River Road. With some concern over the siding of, of a, the potential siding of a car camp in their neighborhood, and so I thought I'd just bring that to your attention, that if, I, I hope that process goes well, the, and that those working with St. Vincent de Paul, and with all that are involved in the establishment of that with LTD, that more notification happens, and that you are aware of it, because I believe we will see quite a number of people here talking to us, if, if, if not. And then I would say, there is a next Santa Clara Community Organization meeting on Thursday night, the 3rd of May, for those that are watching and may want to have their input, as well as a Northeast Neighbors Meeting that night. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Betty, go for it.
Thank you. I was going to talk about the planning commission, if Emily hadn't, but I'll just second it. I've had people very concerned that the planning commission is talking about phase two of, about secondary dwellings, about modifying the requirements. And I think, once the rumor starts, it's hard to, hard to stop it. There are also rumors, and I don't know, I won't say too much about this, but there are rumors that we might ban bird feeders. And I've tried to reassure people that we're not even considering that. People also concerned about cats, and you'll hear more about that later. And also, I've heard from my, from a couple of neighborhood groups that, asking when we're going to discuss C-2 zoning. It's on the list of future sessions, but there's no date yet. And I would like to know, too. And I had complaints about electric bicycles on the river bike path, making it very hazardous for pedestrians. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I think we'll just move on to our first agenda item.
I'm Kristi Hammond. I am the interim Assistant City Manager, staying in tonight for City Manager John Reese. The first of the two items that we have is the local options for affordable housing. And Michael Kinnison and Stephanie Jennings are here from the Planning and Development Department tonight, so I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you. I'm Michael Kinnison with Community Development, and as Kristi said, we're here to talk to you about local options for affordable housing, or specifically a construction excise tax. And with me is Stephanie Jennings, and she's going to do the bulk of the, of the talking with the presentation. But I wanted to talk to you a little bit first about kind of the process we've had to date, to get, to provide some context. Stephanie's going to talk more about an overview of affordable housing funding, what Senate Bill 1533 actually enables, what other jurisdictions are doing with CET. Then, we'll move specifically to what the recommendations are for this evening, and hopefully leave plenty of time for a robust conversation and for the rest of the time, and any questions that you may have. In terms of process, almost a year to the, to the date today, back in April 12th of 2017, we started this conversation. If you recall, we had a work session, and at that time, we received direction from council to work with the Housing Policy Board, the Human Rights Commission, and others on policy options for construction excise tax, and also to look at mandatory and voluntary options for inclusionary zoning. Tonight's conversation is about a construction excise tax. That's where we focused our work, but we will be back to have a conversation about inclusionary zoning in the future. And then, after that, we got to work with the Housing Policy Board primarily, and they led a conversation and developed a work group, and eventually developed a recommendation, which is in your packet, and related to a construction excise tax. And that was presented to you in December of 2017. At that work session, we talked about the need to engage more broadly in community and continue exploring options for a construction excise tax, and we spent several months doing just that. And we engaged in multiple conversations with different stakeholders, including representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, the Home Builders Association, and others in the building and real estate communities. And the results are what was presented to you tonight, are two recommendations. One, which are, have been presented to you on separate paths in requesting council action. And one of those is specifically related to drafting an ordinance for a construction excise tax, and the other is to bring back to council a proposal for a parallel process that would look at existing barriers that have been voiced to us in our conversations with the business and building community around barriers, existing barriers, that are adding to the cost of building housing. So, we'll talk more in the presentation about what those recommendations are specifically. But that's here, what we're here to talk to you about tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to review some information you've seen previously during our past two work sessions, as well as some additional information, including the staff recommendation. So, just briefly to start off, over time, the City of Eugene has primarily relied upon federal resources received by the city to support the development of affordable housing. Over time, we have seen a significant decline in these resources, and as you, at the same time, that Eugene's population is increasing. And so, we have a decline of resources, increasing population, and then also, of course, over time, these dollars go, don't go as far as they used to in terms of supporting the number of units of affordable housing development. We have done some analysis of our population and thinking about the needs within the community. We have a significant portion of our population that earns below $35,000 a year, and we looked at what kinds of units those houses could, those households could afford. We do find that there is a significant deficit of units at the lowest end in the community, and that really, this, these are the folks that can afford $625 or less per month, and they're all competing for those very limited units. And that is having a number of different housing impacts in our community in terms of lack of affordability, people living in lower-quality housing, people living in overcrowded conditions in our community. We also see a smaller deficit at the middle range, and this is really households that are looking to become first-time homeowners. They're really are having trouble finding units that are affordable to them at the mid-range as well. There are many local communities across the country that find themselves in these same circumstances. And creating dedicated local sources of funding for affordable housing has been a tried-and-true strategy that over, that hundreds of state and local jurisdictions have created, to create ongoing dedicated sources of funding that are flexible and adapted to local needs. These resources are typically used for the production and preservation of affordable housing through acquisition, new construction, and rehabilitation. And they're frequently coupled in the same way that we couple our federal resources with other state and local funds to facilitate project development and preservation. There are significant limitations on the ways in which local governments can raise revenue in Oregon, but in 2016, the state legislature passed SB 1533, which created a new mechanism for supporting the development of affordable housing at the local level. And it also created a limited form of inclusionary zoning that could be adopted at the local level. Under SB 1533, a construction excise tax may be placed on residential development, on the permit valuation up to 1%, and then may also be placed on commercial or industrial development, and there is no limitation for that type of development. Under SB 1533, local jurisdictions may also adopt a mandatory inclusionary zoning requirement on buildings with 20 or more units. However, additional incentives must be provided if a local government chooses to adopt an IZ program. SB 1533 also provides us limitations on how these resources can be spent. For the residential CET, 50% must be reserved for local affordable housing incentives. If a local government adopts inclusionary zoning, they must reserve these resources for inclusionary zoning incentives. Another 35% can be used for affordable housing programs and incentives as defined by the local government, and then the remaining 15% is for down payment assistance. Under the commercial CET, 50% can be spent on programs related to housing as defined by the local jurisdiction, and then 50% are flexible dollars that may be dedicated as a local jurisdiction chooses. Since the legislature passed SB 1533 in 2016, eight jurisdictions have adopted CETs to support affordable housing development. Most of these jurisdictions have landed at a 1% rate across the board. However, the most recent jurisdiction to adopt the program, Medford, elected for a 0.33% rate across the board. Ben's program actually predates the state's preemption on use of CETs, and so that was passed back in 2006, and I think many of you have heard about Ben's program. I'll now move on to the staff recommendation for CET implementation, which covers three elements: rate and effective date, exemptions, and allowed uses of funds. Staff recommend a 1% rate for all types of construction with a delayed implementation date of July 1st, 2019. At a 1%, this would raise almost $3 million per year, based on our estimates of construction activity over the past two years. About 2/3 of this revenue would come from commercial development, and 1/3 would come from residential development. The delayed effective date is in response to the concerns that we've heard from the development community, and would also allow the city and staff to move forward with the other recommendation that Michael, Michael will discuss after I conclude my talking Staff recommend three exemptions in addition to the statutory exemption. First is to exempt affordable housing developments that are eligible for the system development charge waivers under Eugene Code 7.725. The second recommendation is for developments exempted, to exempt developments that receive the multi-unit property tax exemption under Eugene Code 2.945. This is in recognition that these developments are already required to either include affordable housing units in the development, or pay a fee in lieu to support affordable housing development. And then the third recommendation is to exempt newly constructed single-family homes or condominiums sold to homebuyers at 250, sold for $250,000 or less. This amount really reflects what's affordable to a household at 100% AMI to purchase a home for a family of three. We would target, we would index this price and adjust it annually to reflect market The recommended use of funds is to support a range of housing programs for households earning 100% of area median income and below. This would allow the city the flexibility to support both projects that need a deep level of subsidy, as well as those that just need a small incentive to move forward. Recommended use of funds also includes administrative costs for CET collection, as well as cost-to-staff program implementation. The table at the bottom of the slide provides you with information about what are the incomes at, for different household sizes, at 100% of area median income, as well as a correspond, corresponding monthly housing payment. As we think about the types of housing that could be supported through this, there's actually a really broad range that has been envisioned as part of this, which includes permanent affordable rental housing, affordable homeownership housing, transitional housing, mobile home parks, and tiny homes. And then, because it is a very flexible source, it could be used for a wide range of project costs, depending upon the needs of the particular project. We do have a significant amount of experience in implementing different housing programs, and as this rolls out, staff would roughly follow the processes that have been developed for establishing longer-term goals, annual goals, and then implementation of programs as we do with our federal programs. I do also want to mention that we have seen a significant leveraging of resources based on the use of the federal funds. We have calculated for the past three years, a leveraging ratio of 5.5 to 1, which really means that, you know, this is bringing in many more resources than we're expending to get to a very significant level of impact in the community. So, to recap, the recommendation in the AIS is to move to direct the city manager to prepare a draft ordinance to create a construction excise tax, including the rate of the tax, the effective date of the attack, of the tax, any exemptions, as well as allowed uses of the tax revenues. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mike Kinnison, who will finish the presentation.
Thanks, Stephanie. Move it to number two. So, when we, excuse me, when we went out and had additional conversations about the construction excise tax with stakeholders, excuse me, we, we focused initially those conversations on, on the construction excise tax itself. Concerns folks had, thinking about ideas about how we might tweak an ordinance that might be, address folks' concerns, be more acceptable to a broader cross-section of the community. And so, some of the, the exemptions that you see were an attempt by staff to be responsive to that. And so, for example, MUPD, there was conversations around how might this impact other broader city goals we have, for example, around getting housing downtown. I mean, we have a goal to provide another 1,000 units downtown. How are we going to get that done? And so, MUPD is one tool to encourage that, so we don't, we want to be sensitive to, for adding additional costs, we're not undermining other policy goals. So, that's kind of how we landed there. There were concerns about how a tax might impact, and make it harder to build the exact kind of housing that we're trying to encourage. So, what might be the impact to more moderately priced housing, or other, other forms of housing? And so, that was why we have an exemption in there that relates to a value, a home value, that's roughly correlated with 100% of AMI, so that we're trying to be sensitive to, that we're not undermining our efforts to encourage more moderately priced housing that isn't necessarily in, in what we might think of traditionally as affordable range. So, we had conversations around that, but the, but the conversations, we quickly exhausted those conversations, and we spent a lot of time, because there was a lot of energy around in, among the business and building community about existing barriers that they feel are really getting in the way of, of producing more housing in the community, particularly moderately priced housing, or missing middle forms that they're, we have lots of interest in across the community right now. And folks spoke very passionately and around that issue, and provided specific project examples about where those things are happening. And, and that is compelling, and hard to deny, that it's very challenging for builders to accomplish those, those goals. So, it became apparent to us that this conversation around the construction excise tax also needed to be responsive to what we were hearing out there in those conversations. So, that's where this recommendation comes from, and it's, it's, it's asking council for direction to come back to you with a proposed process. And the reason is that we don't have a preconceived notion right now about what a process is going to entail, other than, we know it's going to take resource. I mean, this, this item is not on anybody's work plan right now, and for us to get there, we want to be able to get there, but we think we need to be realistic about, it's going to cost something, so we wanted to flag that for you, that we'd be, be back with a cost that might appear in a future supplemental budget. We also, we also think it needs to be objective, so we're thinking that bringing in a third party, our consultant, could be helpful in this process, somebody who could actually, in addition to adding capacity that we are stretched with right now, meeting, it could also provide an objective voice to do that work. And so, that, the results of that work could be accepted more broadly among all the different stakeholder interests involved. We know it needs to be inclusive, so we know it needs to affect, or involve the stakeholders affected, so it will have process around it, so that, that is going to take some time. It also needs to be results-oriented. We, we think that if we're making this commitment, the commitment is that we produce results, that we're not just studying this, that we find ways to actually really move the dial around barriers, as, as well as generating revenue for affordable housing. And then finally, I would say, we think it needs to be focused. If, if we want to have a time-limited process, and we actually feel like we can deliver on some things, we have to be realistic about what's the scope of that. And so, we've had some conversations already with, with members of the Housing Policy Board, and members of the development and business community about trying to put some sideboards on this, and be realistic about what we're talking about. And so, it needs to have a fairly tight scope. Other than that, we don't have a preconceived notion right now about what that process is going to be, but what we propose, we would do is come back to you in fairly short order with something to consider, so that we move forward. So, you know, Stephanie already mentioned, you know, why a delayed implementation. The, part of that reason is that trying to be responsive to the community's needs, the big gap we have in providing affordable housing, and coming up with additional funding to do that, while at the same time, allowing for us to do some work before we implement that, to alleviate some of the existing barriers we have. So, those are the two recommendations we have, and I think we'll close there and leave it open to discussion.
Thank you very much. I think that was a very helpful explanation of the process and what you're proposing. I already have Mike in the queue. Do I have other folks needing to? Greg?
Claire.
Claire? Allen?
Chris.
Chris. Okay.
Betty.
Betty? Gotcha. All right, Mike, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate staff's presentation very much. I appreciate that you're being responsive to council direction from last year. I understand that, and I appreciate it. One of the things I would say, however, is that I think a lot in the world has changed since last year, since you got that initial direction. I think our community has seen that a kind of spontaneous process came together around better housing together, and an awful lot of people showed up for that meeting. I see an awful lot of them in the room here tonight, who were, who were at that, and who were concerned about it. And when we had council goal-setting, housing was probably one of the first things that got mentioned, and, and... got mentioned and brought to the top of the board about something that this council wanted to put an awful lot more emphasis on this year. And so while I appreciate what you're putting forward in that first recommended motion there, that seems kind of narrow to me in today's scope of things compared to where the community is, as opposed to last April when you got that kind of direction in the first place. I'm entirely comfortable with the second motion, but I think we've already, both through goal-setting and through what the community is already doing, kind of decided we want to have a broader conversation around housing affordability. And so while I would, as I have several times, rail against the construction excise tax as a bad idea right now, I think it would be wiser to have a conversation about best outcomes here and what we might like to have as a, to take at this opportunity to do. And I think that second motion with a couple of tweaks, from what I've heard from people in the community, might cover that as direction real well. I've heard someone tell me that many in our community's conversation around housing is focusing on affordability, availability, and diversity of housing types. And I think that's a, that for me is a much better place to start the conversation around, hey, what do we need to do to rebalance this market and find what we need? And, you know, at the end of the day, maybe a CET is a part of that option, a part of that solution package. I just think we need a broader conversation first. So when it comes time to make motions, I'm just going to listen to my colleagues first and see what they say. But I'm not sure I'm ready to move forward with the CET at this moment. Thank you.
Greg.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to echo some of the concerns that Councilor Clark has just made in this regard. Let me ask a couple of questions just for clarity. How did we come up, or how does staff come up with 1% as the rate? Is that based on the maximum that we can do under the law? Or is this being more concurrent with what other municipalities are doing around the state? Because I note Metford is 0.333%.
There are a lot of different factors that went into what ultimately staff recommended. So one piece of this was the recommendation from Housing Policy Board, which was for 1% across the board. I think another piece that went into this is thinking about what would help us to make progress against that deficit at the lowest end. You know, so we have a very significant deficit in the amount of housing that is affordable, and that deficit has grown over time. And we know that $3 million, while it is a chunk of money when it comes to development, that money will go fairly quickly when you look at the typical amount of federal subsidy that we're putting into those more deeply subsidized projects. And we've seen a lot of demand from community partners that are eager to build more affordable housing but are quite frankly limited by the resources.
And as a precursor to this particular work session, I've had a number of conversations with stakeholders around the community who have concerns about, you know, moving forward with a CET without having a more broader, deeper, comprehensive conversation about the barriers to building affordable housing in the community. And so, you know, I think that what we should do is take a step back, possibly form a short-term task force since we're not talking about implementing a CET till July of 2019. It does give us some time to be able to have the stakeholders come to the table, have a broader conversation, and then look at having a comprehensive proposal that is not bifurcated into a CET and then also looking at a, you know, what the barriers are and how we can, you know, do some things statutorily to either mitigate those barriers or remove those barriers. So I'm in favor of us having a more global conversation with stakeholders, a time-limited conversation, given staff resources, and for us to maybe looking at a 180-day time limit on a conversation. And then as brought back to council, a package of suggestions and strategies that may include a CET and what that would look like, either up to 1% in the residential scope as well as up to 1% in the commercial scope.
Okay, Claire?
Thanks. I had a few questions and then some comments. So in this discussion that council's had and staff has engaged with in the Housing Policy Board, was there any conversation about a differential with the residential versus the commercial industrial? For example, a 0.5% residential CET and a 1.5% commercial industrial, was that ever suggested or contemplated in terms of looking at what the revenues might be and what effect that might have?
I would say at a staff level, we considered it. And then when we came down to thinking about what's the total resource that we would like to see and equity across all construction types, we landed on 1% across the board.
And I raised that, one, to just put it out there as a potential tweak, and also noting that the commercial industrial tax is more flexible in terms of its allowed use by law. So it would give us more flexibility, and it might mitigate some of the concerns people have that we're adding to the cost of building more housing. But I don't know, because we haven't had any in that analysis, of what potential effect it would have on commercial industrial buildings. So, and then you mentioned the exemption for MPT projects. Do other jurisdictions exempt their MPT projects from this tax?
I can look and see what the other exemptions are. There were a variety of different exemptions that other jurisdictions included. So let me look in my materials and I can answer that question and see if they had a specific exemption for downtown-type projects.
Yeah, I'd like to know that. You know, people are already critical of our MPT, and this would be a double exemption for the MPT project. And so, you know, I might be open to the idea of dialing it down so that the units that are required for, to be affordable, you know, would be taken out of the consideration of the, how the tax is applied. But I don't know that I would support totally exempting projects that qualified for MPT. And then there was the exemption for homes under $250,000 or less, and there was language there about sold to home buyers. And I'm assuming that's very specific language for a reason, as opposed to selling those homes to a venture capitalist group or something like that? Is that what that's trying to get at?
I think what we've heard in these conversations is that there are limited opportunities for people who want to buy their first home. And so the intention with that exemption is if someone, if a developer is intending to develop and will reserve those for home buyers, that they could receive an exemption from the CET.
Okay, great. So I actually support staff's motion around coming back with the process and funding to work more deeply on this. I'm not as supportive of totally postponing any action on the CET until that's accomplished. So I'm looking for some kind of medium there. Councilor Evans mentioned 180 days, and now you're making me do math on how many months that is. Thank you. So that's reasonable to me. I was thinking an effective date of January 2019 for the CET would be about nine months to get us to work on these other issues, but I will wait for a second round.
Great. Alan?
Following up on what? Something that Councilor Cyret said, the sold to home buyers, as opposed to building a house that is going to be sold to someone who's going to rent it? Is that what, that's what that's supposed to get at?
Sold to someone who is going to operate it as a rental unit, yes.
Right, okay. So it has to be somebody who's going to buy a house to live in it?
Yep.
Right, okay. I wanted to hear more about the outreach that you guys did, the number of people, number of meetings, are there meeting notes available for those meetings? And kind of, I kind of have this sense that that hasn't been as fleshed out as I would like it to be, and council hasn't been involved in that, so I'd like to hear more about that. Do you have more information?
So we pulled together the members of, excuse me, of the HPB task group that had been working on CET and met with members of the chamber and Home Builders Association. And so we had an initial meeting with that group.
Yeah, Home Builders in Chamber?
Yes. And then we, staff met separately with just the members of the chamber and Home Builders Association and one person from the, one builder in the development community who kind of went through a project of theirs to kind of help us really understand what those barriers are. And then we've had a handful of other meetings, staff, Stephanie and I, with others of the, that are involved in either real estate or development. And then we brought those groups back together for a final meeting to kind of review what we heard before and what we've kind of heard in some of those subsequent conversations and get any other thoughts or ideas about what they'd like us to consider before we craft a recommendation.
How many people do you think that?
If I had to guess, I'd say maybe 15 people, 20? We were, I'd say we were targeted in who we reached out to.
Yeah.
Can I just add something? So prior to December, Housing Policy Board held, I would say, probably 10 meetings between receiving the initial council direction a year ago and then coming back with the recommendation in December. And so, and one of those did include going to LGAC at the Chamber of Commerce. They actually held a public hearing as part of one of the HPB meetings to ask people to come and comment. So anyone from the public could have come and commented as part of that process. And so really, the kind of process prior to December was the HPB holding all of that in their public meetings and giving both different community members an opportunity to participate. I think late in that process, we realized that the chamber maybe wasn't so aware of everything that was happening in the home builders. And so then we did specific outreach and then came back in December with the recommendation to allow some more time for some more targeted outreach to those audiences that had specific concerns.
Right. So how long did the Housing Policy Board CET task force run?
So they actually started talking about this even before the council work session in April of last year. I mean, they've been talking about this pretty much since the legislature was even considering SB 1533, and then really got underway last, you know, I would say probably May, June. I'd have to look back on the specific dates.
Okay. I'm wondering how the second motion about the process to bring back ideas relates to the February 22nd Affordable Housing, Missing Middle Housing work session that we did. It was my pull that brought that forward to talk, start that conversation at the council. The direction that came out of that meeting was that, from the council, was that we tasked staff to come back with potential actions to create more affordable housing and missing middle housing. So how does that relate to this?
Well, I'd say it relates to it just specifically in terms of funding. So if we're looking at trying to create more affordable housing, we need to have more resource, flexible resource to do that. So I'd say in that sense, it's directly related to that. You know, there's also a number of other, you know, this isn't happening in isolation either. The, if you look at, I think it is Attachment C in your packet, we tried to capture some of the other work that's going on within the, within the planning division's work plan primarily, that's looking at these issues as well, particularly around missing middle housing too. So there's, there's a number of different initiatives that are going on around this, both in community conversations and existing work outside of just this conversation around CET. It's all trying to get a handle on the challenge of providing more moderately priced and missing middle forms.
Right. When I put that work session poll about affordable housing and missing middle housing, my thought was that we would assess where we are, we did, and we learned what we're doing, and then we're going to talk, come back and learn about different options, and then we're going to create an action plan. So kind of the ability to assess and then plan and then act. And so this seems like it's out of place from that, that it kind of got pulled. And I'm wondering why CET is moving at a different pace than everything else and why this isn't part of a larger conversation about affordable housing, missing middle housing, and part of the package that we would bring back and talk about in its entirety instead of nitpicking it, pieces part at a time. I think this process, when you have a larger conversation, CET has a, fits into it, SDC waivers or some other incentives, streamlining the code, talking about things that the builders have that may work to incentivize them to build more of the missing middle housing. And that whole package of stuff, I think, has to be thought of as a package. And this kind of doesn't fit for me in that regard.
I think, I think part of it is some of these things get started at different times. So this conversation started over a year ago. The work session you're talking about is a more recent work session. So I can certainly see how it seems, how is all this getting coordinated? Some of it is how it gets initiated, I think. And so at least with this conversation, we're kind of on the tail end of the work that was initiated a year ago and directed by council in coordination with one of our advisory bodies, HPB. And so we're kind of trying to bring that forward to you. Should it be happening in isolation of these other conversations? No. And could we maybe be coordinating better around that? You're probably right. Certainly, this process that we're proposing here today could address, could bring some of that together that may, perhaps may look like it's not being coordinated now.
Yeah, I would like to see one process, and then at the end, we have a package that we look at.
Yeah.
And I would just also go back to a conversation that we had in 2015. And so I did a series of three work sessions with council on the consolidated planning process. And I actually remember your comment, Councilor Zalinka, that this is a great plan, but we just need to be able to triple the number of units that we're trying to produce. And what we estimated we could produce was not in response to the need that we assessed through that planning process, it was in response to what we thought we could do with the federal resources we receive. So we have been in a really, a constant pattern of every five years going through a very extensive 18-month planning process through the consolidated plan, which looks at both low, extremely low and moderate income housing needs. And what has been found again and again is that there are projects that need a significant level of subsidy that we just simply don't have enough resources to support.
Right. And the CET is a place to potentially fund those efforts.
Kristi, did you want to interject?
Yeah, just for a moment. I was just going to remind you also that at the council goal sessions that we had, one of the major topics, as Councilor Clark mentioned, was housing. And so we're working on coming back to close the loop on the work that you, you know, you spent two days on and coming back with a more comprehensive know, you spent two days on, and coming back with a more comprehensive look at what we're doing regarding housing. Talked a little bit about the potential of a baker's dozen, and coming back and talking about how all of these things start intersecting. And so, it does feel a little bit like things are moving differently. So, our hope is that we'll bring back something that gives you a more comprehensive plan about what we'll be moving forward. So, that helps.
Chris, you're up.
Thank you. Great conversation so far, very informative for me. I believe that affordable housing really requires affordable building. Did, were you ahead?
No.
No, no, you're good.
Okay. Drove me off my momentum here.
She just wanted in the queue, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, just wanted in the queue, okay. And, and so my worst outcomes, I have actually two worst outcomes here. The first worst outcome would be that as we, that if we strive to come up with new funding mechanisms, we increase the cost of affordable construction to where it's no longer affordable. And from the conversations I have had, a lot of the people in the building community are saying that the price to build affordable housing is already pushing that extreme limit. I cannot build affordable housing because of, and then you fill in the blank with a lot of things. A second worst outcome, though, that is actually in conflict with this, is with the table we saw of our declining federal revenue, we are rapidly running out of money to build and help to underwrite affordable housing. And so while I don't want to keep adding additional costs to builders to make it impossible for them to build, at the same time, I don't want us to just run out of money, where we also cannot build affordable housing, utilizing many of our affordable housing builders. So, how do you create a housing trust fund and put money in it to compensate for the money we're losing at the federal level, and not also create increased barriers and unaffordability, you know, for building? And so now that gets to my best outcome, which is, we have the conversation that says, what are those specific barriers to building affordably? And from what I am hearing, there are barriers to building affordably. There's zoning barriers, code barriers, permit barriers, time barriers, land use barriers, permitting barriers, you know, I could go on and on. And all of those barriers have with them an attendant cost. And while some of those costs are perfectly legitimate, there may be other costs that we could say, you know, if you did it a little differently, it wouldn't cost so much. And so I do agree that a larger conversation is absolutely in order. But I've also been cautioned, not only by folks in the Housing Policy Board side, but also folks within the building community, who say, wait a minute, we've done this before. You said, okay, we're going to talk about all the barriers, and we're going to have the conversation, we're all going to get together, we'll sing kumbaya, and then we'll all go back and nothing will happen. And so I think if we want to have a larger conversation, I think that is essential, but it has to be manageable. And Counselor Evans talked about a time limit. I think that's, that's a good thing to impose. But I also think there should be a limited number of measurables that we actually identify that we want to come up with. So we say, so we don't say, we're just going to talk about housing, and all of the barriers about it, because I, I'm already collapsing under the weight of that conversation. But if we say, we're going to set up a specific group to identify a specific set of barriers, I'm sorry, I'm running over, and the group, and they work on that, I think that may be a more manageable process. And I can talk about it some more in a second round.
Okay, great. Okay, Betty?
Thank you. First comment, I wish we would talk about not confuse affordable and subsidized. I, I mean, it's not the same thing necessarily. And I get confused when we say affordable housing, and you really mean subsidized housing. I wish we would say, if it's subsidized, I wish we would say subsidized. And then a question, and as for why we are talking about this tax, I, I think it has just become allowed, and there are many, many people in the community who say, it's allowed, you could do it now. And lots of cities have done it immediately. So that's why people, some people are impatient for us to do something. And a question I have is, could this money, if we pass the tax, could the money be used to help people stay in their homes?
Yes. And we currently use our federal resources. We have an emergency home repair program that's up to $5,000. We do rehabilitation. It could be used for foreclosure prevention, or other types of rental assistance.
People can't pay their utility bills sometimes.
Yes.
That's the last thing.
Yes.
And things of that sort. And if their car is impounded, which I've been hearing a lot about lately. People whose cars are impounded, and they can't afford to get, pay to get them out. I've asked previously-
There is some, there is some flexibility with the commercial CET. I'm not sure if you could sort of consider car impounding as a housing cost.
But it's-
But you do have some flexibility with the 50% of the resources.
If you're on the edge financially, any big expense can be the thing that causes you not to be able to stay in your home.
Yep.
And I think that's maybe more important than, than getting, than helping people who are already out of their homes. Someone had the, I mean, if you see things that are happening, I think, I think it was Judge Aiken who told the story about the babies, picking up the babies that have gone over the waterfall. And he said, why don't you go up to the top and get them before they go? And that's, I think that's a good illustration of, it's a lot harder to get somebody back in once they've gotten out of their home, once they don't have housing. And as for whether we should do this right now, I don't know. I haven't decided for sure. But I thought that the manager's recommendation for passing it and then deciding how to do it seemed to make sense. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Thank you. So first off, thanks to this report. I was not here last April, so I very much appreciated all the background, and helped me bring myself up to speed. I appreciate all the comments that have already made, been made. I really have two expectations out of this process. And the first one was, I'm going to use Alan's word, was coming out with a package. And that we would, like this, look at each possible component and analyze it, and how can we use this, and what are the things that it's going to affect, and positives and negatives. And then once we go through all those, we'll bring them all together and make sure there aren't conflicts between them, and, and create some kind of package that will encourage what we're trying to encourage. But working together, not one thing at a time, like this feels like. Because, you know, more money is great, but maybe we don't need the whole 1% if we're doing something over here and something over there. And we won't know that if we're looking at them in isolation. So, I really like Alan's package idea, I'm going to use that term. And my second part is community input. How many, you mentioned the Housing Policy Board had a public meeting. Do we know how many people showed up to testify?
I would have to look back at the notes to see how many.
My guess is, it probably wasn't that many. And so, and 15 folks, that's great, but obviously, our population is much higher than that. I think we really need to take this community input seriously, and have a high expectation of who's going to show up in the end, and the diversity of the folks we want to show up. And we need to do that every step of the way before we get to that package. So, I would not vote to do a CET now and then figure it out later. I think that's backwards. But the second motion, whatever we're calling that, I am in favor of that. And I think we should look, you know, at the barriers and see what we can figure out.
Emily?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I'm very concerned about doing something now and then not using it for a year, because we're going to be talking about it some more. I think we should talk about it some more first, like my colleagues are saying. And if we're not going to get the money from it for a year, well, nine months from now, we could do the ordinance, and we'd have the money in a year. So, I'm really not understanding the need for a rush, when, there's some proposals of what exactly, you know, the percentage and everything. But I'm, I'm really thankful that my colleagues are pretty much asking all the questions I had, and we seem to be thinking the same ways. I get how the federal government money is going down, so we need some more money to, for the gap in between what we're getting from them. I'm also concerned about the double incentive for the MPT. On page 16, under potential impact, it says, housing-related operational support. Could that support a shelter?
We would have to work with a city attorney's office at the definitions of the different components. And as I mentioned before, 15, 50% of the commercial CET is flexible, and may be used in any way that council determines.
That was my next question. This flexible money, does it just go into the general fund, and we can use it for dog parks, or does it have to go towards housing specifically?
The manager's recommendation was to dedicate it to housing programs. This is what we heard from Housing Policy Board, and we also heard concerns from the business community that they would like for the resources to be specifically dedicated to housing. So, but that is council's option. You may choose to do what you wish.
I like that option also. But at the state level, does flexible money mean it goes into the general fund, and we can do what we want with it?
I believe that that is possible, but I would just want to verify that with CAO, or you could dedicate it for another purpose. It appears to be pretty open. There's not very much language in the legislation related to this issue, so.
So in the future, if we wanted to change where we put the money, would it have to come back to a vote? Like if we decided, oh, well, we really need those dog parks, so we're not going to spend as much money on housing from this flexible money in the future? You know what I mean? Are the, these things, if we want 1.5%, we'd have to come back for another ordinance?
I think that depends on what goes in the ordinance.
Well, saying what we've got going today, the proposed ordinance.
If you adopt or choose to move forward with what is proposed, which is a recommendation that the funds be used for housing, I believe, yes, you would need to go back and change the ordinance if you wanted to use it for a non-housing purpose.
So my last, just briefly, I know we talk about housing incentives all the time, but what are they? I mean, we have the tax break of MPT. But I'm, I'm confused as to what exactly we're, we'd be spending it on. And I know that's a huge topic, but just some bullet points.
So typically, when we're supporting affordable housing development, we will use a really wide range of supports. And so it might be purchasing the land, or helping with the infrastructure costs, or closing a gap for construction. A couple of local affordable housing incentives that we have in place right now are the system development charge exemption program, and then also the 20-year property tax exemption. And so incentives can take a variety of different forms. They can also come in the form of measures to address regulatory issues. And so, for example, for special needs housing in our code, there are reduced requirements for parking with the idea that those populations are less likely to have as many vehicles. So that it can, they can come in a variety of different forms. You know, I would say that some of the incentives are financial, you know, some of them are process. And, but really, I think we try to be responsive to what projects need to, to move them forward.
Thank you, that was a wonderful answer. I'm pretty excited about all the things we could do with a CET when, if we get to that point, especially like Betty's point that we might be able to keep people from getting unhoused in the beginning. I think that's one of the strategies we really need to look at. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all. I have five counselors lined up for a second round. We have used up almost a full hour in this conversation. So, I just want to, I want some head nods from you. I think I have two counselors, both of whom may have possible motions to put on the table. I'm wondering if those of you who also had comments want to have those comments be part of your response to the motions as they come on the table, so that we can sort of move through that. And I want to, want you all to consider lightning rounds as opposed to three-minute rounds, and maybe look at, you know, a one-minute response, just your pithiest comment, and so that maybe we can still march through. So with that, I'm turning it over to Mike.
Thank you, ma'am. I think a lot of us said very similar things. I think what I said at the beginning is almost exactly what Alan said in that, in our previous meeting. We said we want a more holistic approach to this. We want a package of things that work better to essentially rebalance the market. I agree entirely with what Greg said about this being a time-limited sort of bit of work that would take maybe six months to do this. And as Chris said, so that we don't have ourselves strung out on all manner of analysis forever. But instead, let's get a package of deliverable things that we can do to make the market itself better, and to make more housing more affordable. I, in my reference previously, used the three words that I heard the Better Housing Together folks use about what to focus on. And so I'm going to put that in my motion, just because from what we've said, I think they're accurate. But I'm perfectly willing to have it friendly amended by anybody. But what I want to do is move a version of this second motion, because I think for us to focus on this with the level of intensity we need, we're going to need more staff work. So step one is them coming back to us and saying, okay, cool, we'll put this plan together, it'll be another X dollars for this, for this reason, and we'll, and I want to put a time limit on it that says we're going to accomplish all of that within six months. And so I will say that I move to direct the city manager to bring back to council for consideration a recommended process and the necessary funding to allow staff to identify existing barriers to housing affordability, availability, and diversity in the city of Eugene, and to complete that process within six months.
Second.
Okay.
You mean bring the staff back?
Bring the-
The staff, the, for clarity, for legislative clarity, the staff coming back to us should be as immediate as possible with the cost and the, and the plan. But we will accomplish the ultimate work within six months of saying, here's where we want to go forward and act. That's my intent.
Just for purposes of clarity, from six months from, let's say the motion passes tonight, six months from tonight?
Yes.
Or six, okay. All right. So-
What's the queue?
I have a queue, but it's going to be confusing. I think, I'm going to let Greg jump in, because I know he also had a motion, if that's okay. But I haven't lost track of all of you.
Well-
Was there a second? I'm sorry, on the other side.
Yeah, Betty seconded. What, what, what I'd like to suggest is, based on the advice of council here, that that time certain be October 9 of 2018, which would be six months from now, 180 days. And the second part of this is, would be more or less a friendly, would be for the mayor to appoint a task force of stakeholders to meet and deliberate and put, put the bumpers around, around the conversation.
I'll accept the first friendly. The second, for me, I think we need a broader conversation than just a few of us.
Well, I'm not saying a few. I'm saying, you know, a group of stakeholders.
Not a council committee.
Not a council committee, no. I'm talking, community. We're talking, I'm talking about, you know, home builders, realtors, affordable housing advocates.
Renters.
Renters, whatever the case may be.
Tradespeople.
Yeah.
Yes, would you like to respond to that? Thank you.
That's part of the process.
Yeah.
As a staff person, who's going to get tasked with bringing home the Uber plan for all things housing, I just have concerns that six months, that we, my concern is building expectations that we're not going to be able to meet for you. And I'm not, not to say that, that this isn't a valid, good idea. I just am really concerned that six months, I mean, Counselor Yeh has spoke passionately about expectations around public process and involvement. And if you have that expectation, and you have an expectation that the sideboards, what I'm hearing, much broader than I think that when we, when we had conversations out and commuting came back around what barriers we might be considering. I think those, I think our range of what we might look at was a little more confined than what I'm hearing here at the table. And I just, I'm just concerned that in six months from today, that we can figure out what the process is, who all needs to be involved, what the- what the process is, who all needs to be involved, what the resource needs to be, secure the resource, hire a consultant, do all that outreach and come back with something that is very meaningful and actionable for you in six months. I just feel the need to say that because I just, I don't, I want us to be able to do something that we actually can do and deliver.
And I just, I also just want to jump in and there might be some other thoughts here too, but we do have a coalition, Better Housing Together, which formed for this purpose. So I am wondering if we need to reinvent that since that is the new coalition that has kind of started this process. They are one of the participants and stakeholders. They have begun with those broader meetings. So it may be that that's a core so that we're not starting from scratch, you know, trying to create a new coalition, not that it responds to all of it, but just planting that seed. Okay. The queue has gotten a little confused, but I have Claire, Alan, Chris, and Emily all in my line. So Claire.
Thank you. Although I, I'm apparently more eager than some of my colleagues to get the CET passed, I'm willing to postpone that action and, and engage in this broader process. I appreciate Counselor Clark's motion. Given staff's concerns, I would propose extending the timeline to nine months, which is what I was originally going to speak to in my comments about moving the effective date of a CET to January 2019 instead of July. So, or another way to approach it would be to set the six-month timeframe from the time that staff comes back with the recommended process and funding recommendation. So that's another way to give some time to develop the process.
I'd accept that as a friendly if the second would as well.
The second part of what I said?
The nine month or the six months from the time?
Six months from the time.
Six months.
I'm proposing, here's what we're going to do.
I, I'd be agreeable to that.
Okay.
She was the second.
Yeah. Yeah.
Were you seconded that?
Yeah.
Okay.
What is that again?
I don't like it, but.
It's six months from when staff comes back with the, from a cost X. It'll take six months. Go.
I, I guess that my clarifika, yeah.
I would, I would say what I think I hear is six months from when council approves the process and the funding.
Right.
Right.
Yep, correct.
And, but we haven't determined when.
That will be.
When that will be. So that will be the other piece. Okay. Are you, are you solved?
No lightning round.
All right. Very good. Alan?
So I'm in favor of getting more funding for affordable housing and missing middle housing and like getting it from a CET and addressing the barriers. Well, that's why I put out the work session poll a while ago. My poll actually said that we should address what barriers can the city break down and what incentives can we make available to help create sustainable, a supply of affordable housing? For example, CET, SDC waivers, code changes, tax credits or exemptions, process or regulatory streamlining, inclusionary zoning, land use code changes, zoning, planning, community, community or city bank for financing, talking about parking. So my idea was that we would look at all that stuff. We'd come back with a package of stuff that would, would help deal with the problem of housing affordability. And so in our February 26th meeting, the council said, bring us back a list of potential actions. And so what's the timeline for that, which is, and, and so that's sitting out there. Now, now that this motion is sort of different in that saying process around that, but not the list. And, but we need the list in order to complete the six-month play out of this. So the precursors seem to be, we need the list first, then we get, of all the potential actions, then a process to discuss them and then we can set the timeline. So I'm a little concerned that we're putting a little bit of cart before the horse in a process as opposed to what the list is. So this has baked for a long time. This isn't something that just occurred, affordable housing crisis. It needs more time to bake and needs more public involvement and, but I think it needs to move forward in the context of a package. And so, so I'm not sure that, how this, where's the list coming from and when's it going to get to us? And, and you've got this list of potential actions which we asked for on February 26th and now you've got a process in there. And I'm, I'm not sure I understand how they're related.
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand what's the list.
We told, the council direction was to come back with a list of potential actions to, to impact housing affordability. That was a six to one vote on February 26th. And so when is that coming? That was before.
It sounds to me like the, what we're talking about now is, is, is getting at that list, a process to develop that list. I mean, what I'm hearing there that council's interested is, it sounds to me is like putting together a process so that we can identify that.
We're confused the list with the solution. There's a list of all the things that we could do and I just named off half a dozen of them. So there's the list of all the things we can do. That's the basis of the conversation within the process.
If I could help out just a little bit?
So the processes and the solution to the processes, what we want to get at ultimately.
Yeah, using your terminology, which I, I feel strongly is, is very important is, I think the first step was assess. And so I don't feel like we've done that. I think, I don't know that we understand the problem at a really deep level, the affordability issue. So I think these all fold together. In my opinion, is the first thing we need to do is assess. So we come up, we come back with a, a scope, a process, you know, talking about hiring a consultant. Let's look at the issue deeply and find out what the barriers are before we get to what the solutions are. And I think that's kind of your step system. So to me, these all fold together and maybe even accelerate, I think, your, your, your motion in that let's get on it, let's, let's get a consultant on board, let's come back with a process and let's start looking at the barriers, let's start assessing, and then we'll decide which tools we need to put in place to tackle those barriers. Because I think we're solving for a problem here that we don't quite know exactly what that problem is or what's causing the problem. It's very complicated as, as we all know, I think, so.
Yeah. And, and we'll, we'll fill the time allotted just as we are here now with, so I like the idea of having a time constraint on it. So we'll do our best to assess everything, come up with a plan and then put it into, and then act. So assess, plan, act. And so moving this forward, but I think it needs to be in the context of a package. So it's a bunch of stuff that we're going to do. It's not just one thing. It's not the CET or it's streamlining regulatory review or something like that. It's a bunch of things.
That's what I, and that's what we'll come back with, I think, when we come back to council. That's the kind of package that I hope maybe we can put together.
Okay. Chris?
Fill the camo while we ride.
Just, just a caution. I can remember when we said, you know what, we need to create an inventory of land so we can look at the urban growth boundary. Should take 18 months. Seven years later. So I'm worried that this package, as important as it is, is going to sink us because the package can get envision Eugene large. And while we need to get all of the elements in the package, I really plead that we break the package up into pieces and go after the pieces like, just like I'm going to eat a sandwich, one bite at a time. I'm not going to shove the whole thing in my mouth. So I think what we need to do, and whatever this process is, it needs to identify the most critical and immediate elements and start on them right away. We, and I think we will get to everything in the package that Alan's talking about because I do think all of them are important.
That's right.
But you can have it fast, you can have it right, or you can have it cheap. Pick any two. And I think what these fine folks are saying is it's not going to be cheap and we need to come back to you with what it's going to cost to have it be right and have it be timely because we do want it timely. I, I want it also to be timely. This can't go seven years. And I'm, I'm willing to go six months from the time we have, whatever this package is and we agree to it. But I know that six months is a really heavy lift, especially for this group and all of the other people who are going to want to be involved in it. And so that's going to take money to do, especially if we want to have the kind of outreach we want to have. So I'm just pleading that we get realistic about really doing something that we can actually accomplish and get it done. And so I say a manageable list, done in a reasonable amount of time with the resources that we can put behind it. And so we need to use this process to identify what are those most critical cost barriers that we should address right away and go after them first and then we'll work the rest of the package as, as we can.
I think we agree with that, actually.
Okay. You're okay? Betty?
Thank you. I don't know why we need a consultant for everything. We have talented staff, I think. And I, and also as for outreach, once we don't pass this CET, I think we'll get outreach. There are people pushing us to do it and I think we will hear from lots of people soon. I'm inclined to think maybe we should pass it because we know that we, we know there are lots of needs. We know we need the money. I, I could see passing the tax, saying that it would be, wouldn't be implemented immediately. I thought that was a good idea, actually. But a side effect of all this talk is that the dogs get a reprieve from getting their licenses.
Maybe we'll have time on Wednesday, though.
Yeah. Okay.
You didn't know what that was about. Our next, next thing on our agenda was to talk about licensed dogs.
You're right. I skipped you. I apologize. Emily, you're on.
That's okay. Chris covered a lot of it. How long until the package is ready for us to have the six months to implement? I mean, when they were saying in six months, we'd like you to solve this whole crisis, I'm going, and the question is, what are we giving up to do that? You know, planning's doing nothing else for six months, I guarantee you. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're taking something and making it huger and huger. And I think this, you know, let's do the CET first is because people want to do something. But by saying, oh, we won't implement it for a year, we're basically saying, oh, so let's do the package. But then we just might have to change the ordinance. So I'm just really confused that this will expand into eternity and we won't do anything about housing. Plus you have all my sympathy. If we do have a coalition with Better Housing Together, I really want some other people added to that. I don't think it's representative of all the constituents.
And they can join that, Mary. They can participate. That's open.
We haven't even started about how we were going to do this coalition.
All right. So Alan, did you have one more comment? And then Mike, and then I think we need to.
I think the reason we need some consultants is because you're looking at the people who are going to do this and they already have a full gem job and this is just, you know, top of this. So if we don't hire some people to help us with this, some certified smart people, we're, it's going to log down dramatically. So I just have a quick question. Can you go back to slide, what kind of housing is available in Eugene? It's, I want slide six. It, it relates to the, the bar chart and the deficit of the, of the, of the housing. So if I, if I understand that correctly, and this is really the essence of the, of the, of the crisis, that saying that, keep going.
What kind of housing?
That one. That one.
Yes.
So that's, this is the essence of the, of the crisis that we're having, right? What that says is that for those people, for the people that are of lower income, the number of units that we need for them to spend up to, but not more than 30% of their income is where the problem is. We need to have about 13,500 more units of housing that is in that $625 or less for those people to be not burdened with housing costs. And that's the crisis, that we don't have enough of those lower rent or lower-cost housing by really a long shot. And, and so that's something that's baked for years, decades probably. And so that's what we're trying to address. How do you notch away at that 13,500 need of housing units in that affordability category? Am I got that right? Okay, good.
All right. Okay. I have Claire and then Mike.
So just real quick, I think one of the counselors, I think it was Counselor Yeh already mentioned, looking at the scope of the work that we're thinking of here. And I think you're kind of hearing that, but I just want to reiterate that, that I don't think we're asking you to come back with a plan to solve the entire affordable housing crisis in Eugene, but to lay out a scope of work that addresses what you've shared with us here and the other issues that we've heard from some of the preliminary stakeholder conversations that we had. So I think it doesn't have to be the be-all and end-all plan, but a plan that grasps some of those fundamentals. And so I just wanted to say that out loud.
Right. And I would just, I would just, before I let you go, I would just add to that, that yes, it's just sort of clarity around what these barriers are and what the possible solutions are to those barriers, right? We don't have to solve it all. We just have to know that that's within our sights over time to address that. So, yes, Stephanie.
Claire, I will just remind council that we are required to do a new consolidated planning process. It's, it's, in my experience, it's been an 18-month process, a very, very high level of community participation. That plan is due to HUD in May of 2020, which seems like a long ways off, but when you actually back into 18 months, it's actually starting that process just around the corner. And so definitely, please keep that in mind as we're thinking about this process because it's really, I think it's good to try to coordinate those as much as possible to utilize the work that was done in 2015. And this is going to be my third process and really the, the needs sort of remain the same. They've just gotten bigger over time in the community.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you, ma'am. I agree entirely with Claire that we don't want this thing to be so freewheeling as to, you know, try and cover every problem in the world with regard to housing. But I also don't think it should come back to us and say, how do we address subsidized housing more effectively? That's not, that's not what we're talking about either, at least from the standpoint of the motion I made. It's how do we do a better job with housing affordability, availability, and diversity of type? So it's not just that particular bottom sector that's addressed, at least in the intent of my motion. It's what are we missing to make housing more affordable for more people? Just, that's my intent and I just want to state that.
Okay. Are we ready to, do you have a language for us?
Is there a desire to hear what y'all would be voting on?
Yes.
Move to direct the city manager to bring back to council for consideration a recommended process and the necessary funding to allow staff to identify existing barriers to housing affordability, availability, and diversity of type within the city of Eugene. The process to be completed within six months from council's approval of the process and the funding.
Yes.
Okay. And we, and that's been seconded already?
Yes.
So we're ready to vote? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And I, we, Betty is right. The dogs have a reprieve. And so we may try to get to that on Wednesday.
Yeah, ma'am. We'll look at, I'm trying to adjust the schedule on Wednesday and make sure that we can fit that in because we have a timing issue and trying to get something implemented by summer with a public hearing.
Right.
Being required if you choose to do an ordinance change.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll be back at 7:30.